We'll go ahead and call this evening's meeting to order. First up, we will ask Jason Mason to lead us in prayer, please.
Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we love you. And we just thank you, God. For this day, we thank you, Lord, that we can gather together in air conditioning. And we just ask that you would be here, that you'd be blessed in the conversation and the business that's taking place tonight. Be with the board members. And that your name would be lifted up, in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for everybody in attendance. We will have the roll call, please.
Attorney Mayor Gary Moore.
Present.
City Attorney Darren Rice.
Here.
Alderman Dewey Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Cody Atterbury.
Here.
Alderman Clifford Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Tyler Lampley.
Here.
Alderman Eugene McGill.
Present.
Alderman Jerry Lizzenby.
Here.
Alderman Terry Stahl.
Here. That constitutes a quorum, so we'll move on into the approval of the minutes. There's two approval of the minutes. I ask if there's not a problem, that we go ahead and approve both of the minutes of the last meeting and the special meeting minutes in one motion.
I have a motion by Alderman McGill, seconded by Stahl, to approve the minutes of the May 24th meeting and the June 7th meeting. Roll call vote, Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes. And those minutes are approved. In your packet that you got would be the bills that were submitted for the month. Are there any questions on any of the bills? If not, is there a motion to approve them?
So make the motion.
I have a motion by Alderman Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Lizzenby, to approve paying the bills for this meeting. Roll call vote, Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
And the bills are approved. This will bring us to the public comments section, if there's anybody that would like to address the city council. We ask that you come up, you state your name and your address, and you will have three minutes. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the city council? Seeing none, we will close the public comments section and move into routine business. The first item on the agenda is the awarded bench for the sale of the vehicles and equipment. We had bid opening, I believe, on the night, or something like that. Happy to report that we did get a bid on all equipment that we put up for bid. Tina has the winners. Go ahead.
For the 1985 Chevrolet pickup, the high bid was Kevin Weaver for $2,600. 1977 Ford Wench truck, Corey Nolan, the high bid was $4,105. 1977 Chrysler truck, Kevin Weaver, $1,00501. The next item was the 2005 Wagner Smith pole trailer, Kevin Weaver, $1,00501. The 1950 McCade Powers trailer, the high bid was Steve Troyer for $102. 1966 Chevy one-ton truck, Kevin Weaver, $2,500. The 1988 Chevy C-10 truck cab and chassis was Billy Robertson for $680. The truck bed and Altec room, the high bid was Billy Robertson for $7,876. The Alice Tomlin's D-17 Bush Hog mower and pull behind disc, the high bid was Dion Lindsay. The amount he bid was $2,508. The Bad Boy mower, Kevin Weaver, $1,105. The Husqvarna chainsaw, the high bid was Cole Young, in the amount of $437.21. Homemade two-wheeled trailer, Kevin Weaver, $300. The Ford diesel lawnmower was Brandon Pry, $1,221. Nine-inch auger was Steve Troyer for $101. Twenty-two-inch auger, Andy Glover, $100.50. A thirty-six-inch auger was Andy Glover, $250.50. And we had sixteen total items, nineteen bidders, and the total amount of all the bids was $26,888.21.
That was a nice little sale we had there. Is there any discussion on any of those items? If there's not any discussion, is there a motion to approve the sale?
I'll make a motion.
Oliverman Weaver makes the motion.
Second.
Oliverman Eccleberry, I'm second.
Motion by Weaver, seconded by Eccleberry, to award the bids for the sale of equipment and vehicles. Roll call vote, Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Item number two on the evening's agenda is the rejection of the bid for the sale of a power plant and to authorize seeking bids for the sale of that property. Turn your eyes.
Sure. Some time ago, we had advertised the sale of what I'll call the electric department property. And it was publicized, and we had one bidder. And at the time, we were not able to come to a complete term with him. And so, at this time, I think because we're not able to sell it as hoped pursuant to the proposal and the offer that was made, I think now it would be appropriate for the city council to consider rejecting that offer and allowing me to publish another advertisement seeking subsequent bids on that property. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. But I hear some, there has been some interest and other folks looking at the property. And so, just for your information, but this kind of spending at the worst, in the sense that probably be the cleanest manner to sort of reject it.
Is that a two-step process, or can we reject and put out the bid in one motion?
Yeah, yeah, in other words, if you reject and then say, hey, go ahead and instruct me to put it out for bid, I can go ahead and try to have it published by Monday, or Tuesday, whatever the next...
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Motion by Alderman Stahl, seconded by Alderman Eccleberry, to reject the bid for the sale of the power plant property and to authorize Attorney Rice to begin the process to sell the power plant property and to authorize it, advertise it for bid. Roll call vote, Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
I believe that motion passes. Item number four on the agenda is the consideration of a pay raise for the chief of police and we put the assistant chief of police. It's been normal practice after the approval of the FOP contract, which would be a bargaining unit, that you take, the council will take a look at offering the same pay raise to the chief and the assistant chief. I understand that at this present time, we do not currently have an assistant chief of police. So we can do it a couple of ways. We can strike through the assistant chief of police, or we can leave it in there. Because if something happens and we get an assistant chief of police, then the council will have to come back in and approve the pay raise. The pay raises are the same as the FOP contract. That is a five percent the first year, three and a half years, two and three. Open discussion?
Personally, I would just do both of them, and I would make that motion unless there's other discussion. It's just cleaner.
I agree.
That's second.
I have a motion by Alderman Lampley, and that includes the benefits too, like if they got...
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, motion by Alderman Lampley, seconded by Alderman Weaver, to approve the pay raises and benefits for the police chief and assistant chief positions. Roll call vote, Weaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
And that motion passes. I apologize, I skipped right over, item number three, I got to checking too fast. Item number three is the discussion and the possible action concerning credit card, debit card, card use and fees. Currently, several years ago, we got a payment system network set up so that our residents could make a payment via their debit card or credit card at city hall. At that time, it was considered to be just for the utility bill only. But, you know, we have several different other avenues. You know, we have street and bridge openings and closings. We have funeral burial plots and many other things. You know, so part of the is to ask the council that we accept a credit card payment for any of those fees, that anything dealing with the city be available, be made by your credit card. Today's world, the bank really doesn't want you to use checks, they just sue you use credit cards or cash. And I'll pause here, and we'll ask for discussions, you know. Do we want to authorize that the city accept payment cards for any business with the city?
I don't have any problem with it, I'll just speak up first. I mean, there is a fee, you know, for us to accept the credit cards, things like that. But because we don't charge and stuff like that, our fee is substantially less. I remember, before I came on the council, it was approved, and, you know, Ralph was always the one that talked about it. At first, you know, they looked into charging, but the, you know, fee goes up if we charge the customer. You know, instead of being able to keep our fee at the one percent or whatever, we'd have to charge like what you see at other restaurants and things like that, that 3.95%. And the amount of money that we break in, I mean, bring in from it, the one percent is...
Kayla?
I was told by our representative of PSN that we wouldn't recharge the freight costs if anything extra other than the yearly fee for the equipment and then like a 75-day wage fee if we were to pass the PSN fees on to the customer.
Well, and we'll, the first one was, do we want to allow the residents, whether it's a street opening or any other purchase by the city of Fairfield, to use a credit card, debit card? Is there, I mean, are we in agreement with that? The second thing is, is, you know, to look at, make a passage through of the credit card fees. You know, Kayla provided me with some information. Last year, we processed about $2.7 million in payments. And the fee that we absorbed was $27,800 and some dollars. Kayla forwarded me a fee schedule that I believe everybody got. You know, here it says, you know, the net deposit was .75. It was online or mobile, it was a dollar tenant, it was an automated phone call. It was three dollars and fifty cents on a live PSN represented, even hopefully we're not utilizing that at all. The net deposit, you know, on a live, again, was three percent. You know, I mean, we can pass it through, you know, the fee, but I mean, if we are only paying one percent, you know, I don't know what the additional fees that we might pick up through other services offered. You know, I mean, it's my personal, I mean, I don't like being charged a fee to use my own money. You know, I feel that that's part of business. You know, I know there's restaurants that, you know, in town that are charging, you know, a minimal fee, 80 cents at this one, or three percent at the other. But those are on small ticket items, I believe, so that fee becomes a little more observant, you know, to take it off of your profit. Discussion on the fee structure?
I don't, I mean, I work in a business where, you know, we don't pass along the fee, you know, you work around it. And that's kind of where we've built our rates and things like that. We built it in as cost of doing business and services for the city of Fairfield.
And Kayla, would you say that the one percent is an accurate dollar amount? I mean, of the $2.7 million that we processed, we paid one percent, or about $27,000?
Yeah, those figures are correct.
Okay.
I think the city should be told to call. People have the option of writing a check if they don't want to pay the fee.
They do, and, you know, one of the advantages of the card is it's deposited into our checking account, you know, within 24, 48, 72 hours. If we happen to get a bad check, you know, then we have to chase the bad check and, you know, fees like that. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, it's just part of doing business in today's world, I believe. Now, on a grave opening, do they pay Tina for the grave opening, or how does that work for sure?
If they use a credit card, they would have to go over to the collector window and actually have the card swiped there and then come back to my office to finish processing. Because I don't have a card terminal to swipe.
And I believe, you know, if we want, if we want to allow Tina to accept those, you know, I think we take a serious look at, you know, getting her a swiper that she can use in her office. Same thing with Diane, Diane answers many a phone calls, you know, where somebody wants to pay their bill. DL and the girls up front could be on the phone and rather, you know, to provide a more constant, good customer service, Diane would just be allowed to take that process, you know, and should just tie right back into the daily deposit. You know, so I mean, I think that's something we look at, is the expense of adding a few terminals.
Anything we can do to, you know, increase the customer service and things like that. I mean, you know, we've kind of seen a lot more possibilities, you know, being with Wayne White with the app, where I can just push a button and we pay, I mean, we don't have that here. But I mean, the easier that we can make it for people to pay their bill, the quicker we get our money and everything else.
And they can, and the customers can still use the PSN?
PSN, yeah.
Yes, you know, to pay the bill for here at the city. Any other discussion on any of that? And if there's no other discussion, is there a motion that we will allow any residence payment to be processed by debit credit card? And at this particular time, the city will continue to absorb the fee for that use of the card? I make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Stahl, to allow any payment received by the city of Fairfield to be paid by credit or debit card, and the city of Fairfield will absorb the fee for that cost. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Roll call vote, McGill?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
And that motion passes. I apologize if I skipped past that. I believe number five will be the next, and it's a request for a street closing. It's a request of Not Your Ordinary Church on July 31st. This time, I'll ask Jason Mason to come up and make his presentation.
Hey guys, it's been a couple of years, I think, since I've been up here. We're just gonna, we want to close the street July 31st from 3:00 to 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. It probably won't be that long, so it's time to clean up. We're not going to have a stage or anything, but we're inviting a man named Eddie Day from Western Virginia, Princeton, West Virginia. He, in 2014, he was inducted to the Blues Music Hall of Fame. And he now passes a church called The Bridge, very similar to what we do here, and of course, he plays the blues. So we want him to come and do a in-street public event on July 31st. We're not going to have, we're not going to sell anything, or you're not going to have to bring your own drink or whatever, but it's convenient to the bathrooms and stuff, it's just kind of neat to have something out front of the church. So, that's really all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Mason on the street closing? Again, it's from 3:00 to 10:00?
3:00, 10:00, we should be 20:00, yeah.
Okay. And July 31st, I believe that is a Sunday?
Yep.
And you're looking just to close, is it Third Street?
Second.
Or Second from both roads? I know Chief Callplace is not here, but Bradley, see any problems with the police department handling that request? Thank you, sir.
Right, thank you.
Discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the street closing?
I have a motion by Alderman Stahl, seconded by Alderman Eccleberry, to approve the street closing request for NYC on Sunday, July 31st, from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m., and that would be Second Street between Main and Delaware. Roll call vote, Weaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes. And that motion passes. The last routine...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The last routine business is a recreations fund request for the Fourth of July and a disc golf tournament. Alderman Lampley sits on the recreation committee, so I'll turn the meeting over to him at this time.
Yeah, we had our meeting this last week, and we've been looking at ways to do different events. We, you know, we worked to get the downtown ice skating and things like that, so we're now looking at Fourth of July and later in the summer, doing a disc golf tournament. So Fourth of July, we are planning on having food trucks back out at Southwest Park with the Fourth of July show. And what we're requesting tonight, out of the recreation fund, not out of general fund, so it's out of the hotel motel tax money, that kind of stuff. And it's a, we're going to bring in one, possibly two bands. We have one already for sure that we've hammered down to come and sing for two hours leading up to the start of the fireworks. So then, so we thought, that'd be just a way, you know, we're spending a lot of money to have fireworks, we want people to come out there, really enjoy it. So we'll have food trucks, we'll have music, then the start of the show will be at dusk. The disc golf tournament, we are working with a couple of people that are really involved with disc golf. We're going to buy some disc golf sets that we will sell back, so we will actually get money back on the second request. So it's one, just to kind of front the money to get the program started. We have a really cool disc golf course here on the south part of town that's, actually, a lot of people come here and utilize. We talked to the park, we talked to Jay about, you know, helping get it cleaned up, but we want to help them bring things just to Fairfield. So, both of them are no higher than, each of them was a $500 request. We don't really expect to hit that, but we just kind of thought that was a good cap for each one. So it'd be a total of $1,000.
Any discussion? And then, the agenda this is the Fourth of July, but, you know, I believe fireworks on July 3rd of this year?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so is there any discussion on the request? If none, is there a motion to approve the request?
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Lampley, to approve giving up to $1,000 toward the Fourth of July celebration and the disc golf tournament. Roll call vote, Lampley?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
And that motion passes. That would conclude the routine business. Something, you know, that, you know, sometimes I think maybe we overlook, you know, we come to the city council meeting and we talk about, you know, requests and whatnot, but, you know, you need to take a look at the financial aspects of the city, you know. And I created a spreadsheet that I passed out to the Aldermen, all the city employees, media. You know, it kind of just gives a snapshot of what happened in May, in the month of May, which is our first month of our budget. And it's kind of, you know, broke down by expenses and revenue. And, you know, some of the things we need to really understand, you know, as you look at some of these numbers. I mean, there are departments that aren't going to make any money, I mean, they're just, again, kind of like the credit card fees. You know, it's a service provided to our residents, you know, the police department is one, the fire department is one. You know, the garage, I mean, they repair our trucks, you know, and they don't charge, you know. You know, so if you take a look at those departments, you know, you'll see some of the departments that, you know, have a negative impact for the month of May. And, you know, they'll have a negative impact, you know, going forward. You know, but for the month of May, our total revenues for the city was $1,665,280. We had an expense of $1,363,911, which, you know, if you wanted to just take away, you know, expenses versus revenue, you know, we made about $301,366 for the month of May. The balance on our general fund as of May was $2,448,568. Cash flow, cash flow for the month of May showed a positive cash flow of $272,526. And then the expense report, if you take a look at that, our, you know, the numbers are included, but our May payroll for the city employees was $336,546. You know, sometimes, you know, people, you know, wonder what the city's doing, what the funds are used for, and, you know, what departments are doing. You know, I could say May was the first month of our year, you know, so hopefully, you know, I will continue to make this presentation monthly and give you a monthly income, a monthly statement, and then a year-to-date statement. Any questions on that? Okay, we'll move into the miscellaneous. The one thing I would like to say before we turn it over is, I believe that I'm going to have, hold a town hall meeting here at city hall on June 30th. Doors will open at 6 o'clock. That will give the residents an opportunity to come up here and voice concerns, what they think that we can do better, what they think that we can do worse. It, you know, it's just, it's an open and honest, you know, I'm going to ask that, you know, conversation is respectful. You know, we're not here to throw daggers or throw names, but again, you know, that will be on June 30th here at city hall, open to any resident of the city of Fairfield. We'll not limit you to three minutes talking, as long as we're, the conversation is constructive. That's all I have for miscellaneous, do you guys have anything for miscellaneous?
We were a couple of months ago checking on house numbers, what was that saying?
I know, at that time, I believe Chief, the chief was, had talked about it. You know, I mean, it is a, it is a city ordinance, you know, that all of the houses have their numbers on them. You know, our police department currently is a little understaffed. You know, we've got a couple of gentlemen in the academy, and, you know, so I mean, it would fall upon their department, or maybe Andrews, but I mean, you know, again, you know, our residents need to put their house number in case an emergency happens. And, you know, some emergencies are a little easier to see than others, if you've got a fire coming through your roof rather than you've got somebody inside that's having difficulty breathing, you know. And I don't know if that answers your question totally, but I know we've talked about it in the past. You know, and we would like to have 100% compliance, you know, of our residents to have their house number on their house.
This is something for tonight, or, I mean, just something for everybody to kind of think about. There's been quite a few rumblings from the IBW side after the FOP contract with residency. I think it's just something that, you know, the council members probably need to think about before maybe grievances are filed. I think it's just something that, you know, the council members probably need to think about before maybe grievances are filed or something like that of, you know, what they thought about offering the same like what we did and, you know, with the last time when we changed the box from the the five-mile circle to the box, is that something we want to think about again, uh, to avoid some grievances, but not something for tonight, but something for council members to be thinking about.
Any questions? I mean, any discussion on that that you want to have? I mean, it's, you know, like I say, when we negotiated, like Alderman Lampley said, we negotiated with the I E B W first, you know, not this contract, but the last one, uh, you know, at that point in time, uh, we used the manhole on Seventh Street by C V S and draw a tree, attempted to draw a five-mile circle. Uh, that was approved. Uh, the FOP contract was negotiated next, and it, uh, our current box, you know, the Barn Hill Crossroads, one sixty-one, Sims Road, uh, you know, at that time, the council thought it was beneficial that we go back to the I E B W and offer them the same residency clause. Uh, you know, currently, as it stands now, there's two different boundaries for the two different organizations. Again, we can't take action tonight, but it's something, you know, we we can, if we want to bring it up on the next council meeting, we can bring that up. Anything else? If not, I would like to have a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of.
Discuss section two C twenty-one, minutes of closed session meetings, two C five, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, two C six, the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body, and two C one, appointment employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Motion by Echolberry, seconded by Lampley to adjourn into executive session. Roll call vote Atterbury.
Yes.
Echolberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Liszombi.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
And we will not be coming out to take any action after the executive session. I thank you all that attended. Have a good evening.